Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Bright County Board of Commissioners on this bright white April 2nd, 2024 meeting. A quorum is present, so we'll go ahead and get the meeting started. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you for giving me a little grace this morning in running the meeting. We have a lot on the agenda. We'll go ahead and look right at the beginning there. Approval of the minutes for March 19th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion on the table, a second. Is there any discussion about anything? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimous. So next, we'll look for the approval of the agenda for today. If there's anything that needs to be added.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right.
I'll second that.
So a motion made, a second, and if there's no more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Unanimous. All right. Let's go down to the consent agenda. Any items that commissioners wish to remove or for discussion? If none, I'll look for a motion on that.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
With no other discussion on that, we have a motion made by Dietrich and second by Holland. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right. That brings us to the time agenda. How did I do? 9:03.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. It is my honor today to request that you approve a resolution recognizing National Works Zone Awareness Week, which is April 15th through the 19th. Every year, last, what, two, three years we've been doing this? It's our Property Services Safety Committee that brings us forward. I've got a few members from that committee with us today. We have a lot of, a lot of our employees out there working on the roads, be it highway workers, county surveyors, doing our monuments, being involved. Last year in August, there was a gentleman from Belle Plaine that was hit and killed in a work zone area. He was 54 years old and a volunteer firefighter. He was not from Wright County, he was from Belle Plaine. But it just brings the attention and the need to be safe out in our work zones for not only people driving through, but those that are working in the, in the work zone. Their family people, their volunteer firefighters, their, their members of our community. So we'd like just to bring awareness to the week of April 15th through 19th for those that work in the work zones and those that drive through them, to be aware of those dangers.
Thank you, Mark. Do we need to do pictures or anything?
Yeah, I usually do a picture with the guys in fluorescents and their safeties with the board members, and then I put something out on, on our website. John usually does that if you all would like to come up, get a picture with the board, recognizing that, and then you do a roll call vote on the resolution.
Thank you.
Steve, you could sprinkle a little road dust on that vest to make it look good.
I really appreciate you guys bringing this forward. Thank you.
Are we in between?
There we go.
We do? Well, of course. Andy's...
I feel underdressed. I should have worn my yellow.
Thank you.
I'm underdressed. I don't have black.
Didn't send you the memo.
Thank you.
A lot of other ones are out actually, you know, doing stuff with snow.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution recognizing National Work Zone Awareness Week in Wright County from April 15th to April 19th.
I'll second that. Okay, we'll go ahead and do a roll call. Catch Mark, since you.
Aye.
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 Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, gentlemen, for coming over here this morning. Mr. Chad, and there's extra news on there that we kind of heard about too as well.
Yeah. So let's, we'll take care of business first here. So the item in front of you this morning is the resolution to approve the MINDAT agreement for our share with the I-94 construction that will be starting this summer, otherwise known as the Gap project. So it's basically for the northbound to eastbound short right turn lane at 19. So this will be the initial, and then once the construction is actually done, we'll get a final dollar amount updated. So.
Wonderful. Thank you for your hard work on that.
Thank you.
So we're looking for a resolution roll call. First, we need a motion to be made on this resolution for the cooperative construction agreement. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Holland, second by Dietrich, and we'll go ahead and do a roll call. Start it. Commissioner Holland.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. Resolution passed.
Chad?
Yeah.
If you could pass on to MINDAT, thank you for working with the city of Elbertville. They're quite pleased with how it all fell together. They, they were at first a little apprehensive, but...
We got there, right?
We did.
Always do.
We did. So thank, thank MINDAT representatives if you ever get a chance.
Will do. Yep. And yeah, so needing, the other option, the other item we learned about yesterday is we awarded 1.5 million in grant funds, state grant funds for the 94, 137, 37 interchange area. So that's our project. We'll be taking the lead on and starting hopefully next year. So, so that's good news.
It's really good.
And that'll be, that'll just lower, that's, that was 100% locally funded, so that'll lower us all off the local share, so.
Oh, that's just amazing news. Thank you so much for your diligence on that.
Thank you.
And thank your team for all the hard work. Thanks again, gentlemen. All right. So we'll go ahead and move on. Health and Human Services. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning, commissioners. Our first item is to request that the board approve the OSAC recommendation to remove the members that you see in your packet from the opioid settlement advisory council due to the reasons as described.
I'll make the motion for removal.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Holland, second by Dietrich. And is that a resolution as well?
I don't believe so. Just a motion.
Just a motion. All right. So we have a motion, a second. Is there any more discussion on that?
Madam Chair, just a couple things. Just the strategy to get more people, how are, how are you going to be recruiting, you know, more members for the board?
Let me check with our public health director, Sarah Grossius.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's my question, too.
I believe we are putting out, you know, information to request, and also we would ask the board to be considering this as well. I believe we're starting right away.
I know Becky is also listening to the board meeting, but she is not here, so she is letting me know. So I'm just waiting for her to message me. But they let me know they're doing active recruitment. Generally, we put that on the website, and then we also send messages out. We put things also on Facebook and other messages. I thought I saw...
I did ask...
John was here for a minute. We can also use our communication coordinator as well.
Sure. Is that something you could also send us as commissioners?
Absolutely.
So we can send out within our townships and cities?
I think upon this motion now, we'll start active, active, you know, activities to get this going. I did ask Becky last week if our intent was to keep the board or the committee at 25, and she thought that was working really well, so that does leave us nine openings on that, on that committee.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Sorry. Yes.
Just wondering, is this anything to specific districts, or you're just going to take them wherever they, wherever they are in the county?
I think we like broad representation, but I think it is basically that you're in the county.
Okay. But at this point, I don't think there'll be a long list. It's just, doesn't happen on a lot of these boards, so hopefully we get representation from the county at least. Okay. Thank you.
We'll get you more information as that becomes a better, a well-laid-out plan.
Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, are we okay if we find out that information down the way? And so a motion was made and second, so we'll go ahead and look, that's a resolution. We'll start off with Commissioner Holland.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
All right. So then we look to...
Sorry, these are a lot of resolutions.
So next, we have our March donation. There was a single donation made, made by the Calkato Community Chest for $250 for our Wellness on Wheels program. We would ask that the board accept that, and that is a resolution.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All right. With no more discussion on the table, we'll go ahead and do that resolution. Commissioner, catch Mark.
Aye.
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 And that passes.
I just want to make one little comment. This last summer, we went and seen the Wow Van and, and seen the participation and the people involvement on that, and want to say thank you. Yeah, thank you. This is, the Wow Van has been in existence for many years, probably at least a couple decades. It used to be a very, very large van that probably would not fit in this area, and now we, it's a very succinct program, I think really meeting the needs better with our community. So it's been a great program. I do have a number of directors' comments. So the first one, you're likely aware of it, but I did put something in your packet that's being supported by AMC, Maxi, MSA, and MCAA, and that is the, that is the action that the legislature has needed to expand capacity in our state-operated system within our communities to meet the acute mental health needs of individuals in jails, hospitals, and community. And we kind of refer to it a few different ways, the 48-hour rule, and within the county, the DNMC, which is Does Not Meet Criteria, which means when we have local, when we have Wright County people that are at one of the, at the NOCA facility, and there isn't a bed for them, then the county pays 100% of that cost when they no longer meet medical criteria. So I did bring with us, because I know the board usually likes to hear what that means for us individually. So in 2022, we had four instances of Does Not Meet Medical Criteria, meaning the county then had to pay the full, I think it was like $3,000 a day for the inpatient stay, and that amounted to $71,233. In 2023, we got by much better. We only had one instance, and it was $25,200. Also, in 2023, we had four individuals in our county jail in a waiting pattern to get to a bed, and that was a total of 161 days for those individuals, an average of about 40, 40 days per individual waiting to get into a facility. So as you can see, it's not only a statewide issue, but it's acute issue here in our county. So we just ask for your support wherever you are if you see that issue come up.
So Jamie, were you, excuse me, Madam Chair, were you able to testify on this already? Or are you, will you on that? Or is it just a letter?
Yeah, our social services manager, Jill Cooler, who's in charge of our adults and disabilities area, did testify, I think, last week or the week before.
Okay. And what is the feel on this? Is there some legislation that is moving forward?
And this is, I, I kind of don't even like to look at legislation until we get further down, because you know, it's always kind of a grab big. There's two issues here. One is to build capacity, and that's going to take years regardless. So even if it does get a forward push, which I think it may, and this year's legislature, I think would take a long time to get that capacity actually built up. The other piece of it, as you know, is that the county's paying 100% of the cost, and then that, those dollars going into the state general fund. And the other piece of it is, we'd like to see those dollars not go into the state general fund, but be redirected back to the county so we can expand our own mental health abilities to provide that for our citizens here. So I don't know, they might bifurcate this issue in the legislature down the road. I'm not sure. I think it's got more chances than it has in the past. This isn't the first year it's come up. This has a very strong leadership, I think, bringing it forward. So fingers crossed.
Well, thank you for doing this. I just, I just know at different levels, and people aren't in their right places, the, the funding for it, and unfortunately, we had just a lot of facilities shut down in the past.
Yeah, and it's, it's been building, you know? I mean, the 48-hour rule has been in existence for over 10 years, and it met the needs at the time to get folks out of jail and into a bed, but without the growth of more beds, that's just kind of stymied those efforts, and now we have people waiting all over the place, waiting for a bed. So that prioritization, it's a really difficult thing to navigate, but there are a lot of eyes on it this year. I think it's got, it's got more legs than it has had in the past.
Well, let us know how we can help.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. My next item was a DHS response to, no, this isn't our, our, our Health and Human Services. We belong to the CAMI, the Community Adult Mental Health Initiative, and that's our four counties, Stearns, Benton, Wright, and Sherburne. And they wrote a grant for, it's a PATH grant, it's a federal grant. It's for temporary housing, and it was, looks like we're receiving the grant. We wrote it for $750,000 to be used by all four counties to expand our housing operations. I believe two of the other three counties, or maybe all three, already have housing staff that they can already start using these funds then, once we get granted for those housing staff. We are not quite set up like that, so as Commissioner Holland knows, one of our goals is to look for a housing coordinator down the road at a future board meeting, and that this PATH grant would then pay 100% of that, that housing coordinator cost, should we be approved for that. So it's good news. One way or the other, we'll be getting part of the PATH grant that was awarded to our joint powers agreement with the other three counties.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would that be, that's not something we can start internally with the staff we have, or because it's dedicated grant money, it has to go to a new person?
It probably has language about not supplanting, but I'm not sure. I'd have to take a look at that. Because we didn't apply for it, Diane Erkins, I don't know if she's here with us today, but she was instrumental as well as part of the ex officio on that group. I believe we could use some of the funding for some of our more focused area. Chad Miller doing outreach with homeless people, we could probably apply some of his hours to this grant. We have our new coordinated intake folks that are working strictly with people, you know, looking for housing. So I believe we'd have like little pockets of areas that we could use the grant money, but nowhere near to use it as robustly as it's meant to be used.
Sure. Well, it's down somewhere.
We're trying.
Congratulations.
Yeah, so it's, it's good news. On a side note, we also found out last week that that same CAMI organization of the four counties, for years, we've been operating on about a $1.2 million allocation that's been longstanding. The state went back and took another look at all the distribution functions within the, how the state funds those community, community initiatives. And for ongoing, our four-county area was awarded an additional 1.8 million. So 1.8 million on top of the 1.2 million for, again, some, you know, very significant mental health needs in the four-county area.
Madam Chair, is that an ongoing?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Ooh, nice.
Yes. You also have some, I believe it says spotlight in Wright County, should be in your packet. It's the federal performance measures that came out recently for our child support division, child support team, I should say. So you can say in all five of the areas, Wright County outperformed the statewide, the statewide performance. And significantly, I would say, the last one, the cost effectiveness, I believe this came up in a slide we presented to the board at the workshop, significantly above the statewide cost effectiveness program, which just means that for every dollar spent on child support program in Wright County, $6 is being sent out. So we have a good return on investment, if you want to look at it that way. So good news there. Also, there is the COVID recovery RFP. If recall, about a year ago, our public health area stood up, kind of a temporary committee to disperse COVID recovery dollars in our community for entities that would have, that replied to our request for proposal. We're doing that a second time, and with this request for proposal, we want to, we seek to support efforts with funding to projects to support community, community well-being, healing, and recovery. There'll be approximately $300,000 that can be dispersed for up to $30,000 each, so a total of 10 projects. Once these projects have been kind of vetted through the committee and looked at to see whether they meet the proposal requirements, then the final selections would come to the board for board approval for those. Any questions about that? It's funded for one year, from June 2024 to June 2025. And again, those are using our COVID recovery dollars meant for that purpose. There is an upcoming laundry event sponsored by Medica Grant, April 2nd and April 9th. I think you have information in your packet. Yes, here it is. Did you get it?
Yep.
Okay. So yeah, there's the April 2nd, that's today, at the Buffalo Coin Laundry, and on the 9th, from 9:00 AM till noon in the Monticello Coin Laundry.
Jamie, are those still being really utilized like they were at the beginning?
I think it's been a space of time since we've had one, so we'll see. I can let, I'll send you an email after to tell you how it gets, in the next week, how they're, but I think they have been very popular. Yes. They've been great.
Madam Chair. Jamie, do you know how many coin laundries are left in the county? Is it just those two?
I don't know.
Okay. Because there used to be more than...
I know we've reached, we've reached out to all the proprietors, as far as I know of any laundry service, you know, within the county.
Okay.
But I think there might be one out in your area, in the, out in the south side.
I don't, I don't think there are anymore, but this is a side business I could open, maybe.
I think, I think Kim said that they use cards at a lot of them, so they, they charge, they put money on a card that they can use for the machines that don't take cards.
So coin-operated might be a misnomer. They're, they're being, yeah, given a, you know, a loadable card that they then use on the laundry machines. I also wanted to let you know that April, starting yesterday, April 1st to this week, is Public Health Week. Public health is, and you'll see a very long, I believe, a pretty long proclamation. I'll leave it up to you. It's not, it wasn't on the agenda, but if you'd like to take, consider doing the proclamation, that would be appreciated, and we would like to also invite you to a salad bar. I think it's being held on the...
Wednesday.
There is it on our second floor?
I think it's tomorrow.
On our second floor?
Wednesday, second floor, yeah.
Thank you. Wednesday, on the second floor, we're having a salad bar luncheon, so you're welcome to join us, please.
Ooh, thank you. That sounds like a great invite.
Yes.
So right now, we'll go ahead and look for approval of proclamation of Public Health Week, April 1st to the 7th. If there's a motion on the table...
Some of, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Dietrich, seconded by Commissioner Holland. There's no more discussion. We'll go ahead and look for a resolution. We'll start with Commissioner Holland.
Aye.
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 Aye. Resolution passes.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We have great public health staff. I think they do our county proud, so I appreciate you taking that extra step. My finals, my final director comment, I guess, is that Wright County will be hosting the State's Opioid Epidemic Response Advisory Council. That'll be on April 19th, from 10 to 2, here on the first floor, in 11:03. And I would just invite you either to attend as a public person, or if you would like to address the council prior to their convening, you can certainly do that. So again, this is a statewide opioid, the governor-appointed opioid epidemic response council.
Madam Chair, will, will they be presenting something, or is it...
This is a regular, so our public health director, Sarah Grossius, sits on that council, and they believe it's just a regular order of business as they work through there.
Yes, thank you. Sorry. This time I wasn't, someone was chirping in my ear prior. So, yes, so the council is required to have 50% of their meetings outside of the metro, and so we all offered to help host in different parts of the state. So I offered our lovely building, and as a member of the council, I think I can offer our space. And so it's a public meeting. We'll host folks. There'll be members of the council. There are four state legislators that sit on the council as well. Hopefully, they'll be in, in attendance.
Is it a hybrid meeting, or is it all in person?
It's hybrid. It is hybrid. There has to be at least one member of the council in person, but I will be here. But generally speaking, they do give time for the host community to both present, so we'll be presenting, as well as if anybody from the administration or from board would like to welcome or provide comments. I can make time on the agenda for...
Or even just be introduced.
Yes. All of the above.
That's April 19th?
Yes. 10 to 2.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So how big a group is it if everybody would come and attend?
How big of a group?
Yeah, how many is it?
The council itself is 15 people.
Okay.
When I attended in the past, there were quite a number of people in the room, though.
Yeah, so we have two different public comment period times. Many people participate online during the public comment period, and then it's open to the public. We have 11:03. I think we'll be fine. So.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's all for my director's comments. Thank you.
All right. We are at 9:25. Can we keep moving forward?
Madam Chair, I would recommend probably taking A1 from items for consideration, just to get a little bit closer to the 9:30.
Oh, A1.
Madam Chair, that would be the resolution declaring April as County Government Month. This is something that's new to Wright County. The National Association of Counties has adopted or appointed April as County Government Month since 1992, and this is the first year we decided to recognize it here at Wright County with a few small events. Mostly, we're going to be doing a series of articles highlighting some of the good work that counties do throughout the state of Minnesota, as well as some specific things in here in Wright County, and some of the statistics on the things and services that we provide. So the action item before you is to adopt a resolution declaring April as County Government Month in Wright County.
Well, I like that one, so we'll go ahead and, a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right. So we have Holland, Commissioner Holland with a motion, and Commissioner Dietrich with a second. We'll look for a resolution. We'll start off with Commissioner Holland.
Can I just add a comment?
Yes.
Real quick. I just want to thank the leaders of our county and our staff, because without us working together as a team, we wouldn't be serving the community well. And so I appreciate all of the efforts, all of the teamwork, and I just want to thank you all for all the hard work that the county can do because of your efforts. So thank you.
Well said. Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. Resolution passes.
Madam Chair, I can probably start with the 9:30 and I think my presentation will get us right up to the 9:30 for public comment.
Thank you. Please do.
Madam Chair, members of the board, before you right now is ordinance amendment number 24 dash one. It was published and noticed. Uh, all records are on file with the administration department in that regard. Uh, this matter is before the board, on the board's request to amend chapter 91, the large assembly ordinance. I believe the last time this was probably looked at was when it was adopted, I'm guessing in the nineties. As you'll see when we reference landlines that we are deleting in this ordinance at one point in time. But, uh, starting with section one on page one, uh, we have amendments to the definitions. The vast majority of these definitions, actually I think all of them relate to the legalization of cannabis, uh, in the state of Minnesota. So we are now going to be permitting, um, in compliance with state law, allowing people to have large events where cannabis is distributed or used. That's a licensed category from the state of Minnesota. So in order to recognize that category later on in the ordinance, we have to define what cannabis is. So that results in us adding about five or six different ordinances just to be able to say you can have a cannabis event. So, so that's the first three pages of the ordinance, all deals with just bringing in, uh, the statutory changes right out of the law and incorporating it into our ordinance. Uh, section two, um, deals with the permit requirements, um, just stating that an owner has to be the person signing it of the property so that we don't have people applying without the owner knowing it. I mean, that doesn't usually happen, but weirder things have happened in planning and zoning. So we just like to be aware of it and make sure everyone's on the same page. Same thing with section three, uh, again requiring the owner's signature. And then getting into, uh, later on into it, you can see on page six, uh, paragraph I, where we did refer to public telephones, that has been struck. And instead I am inserting unfortunately vehicle barriers, um, given some past incidences that have happened across the country and other places in the world. Um, now requiring vehicle barriers, uh, for pedestrian and people and for safety. And then down to paragraph L, this is a request from the board to increase the number of people required for an ambulance. That number went from 500 to 1,000. Um, and then again, you'll see different inserts here of cannabis, like in paragraph M, where they have a cannabis event plan. Moving on then to paragraph Q, um, requiring a bond. And then paragraph R, again, this is where all those definitions in the first part came in, were allowing cannabinoid products, you know, hand products for the use of cannabis. If it, they have a cannabis event organizer license, that complies with state law. Section four then on page nine deals with the timeline. The board asked me to increase it from 60 to 90 days for a new application and 60 days for a, a repeat application. So creating two different timelines for that. C, just articulating that the application fee will not be returned if you're untimely or incomplete. And then paragraph E on page 10, um, deals with the, uh, procedure for denial of a license and basis for why a application should be denied. And then the last one, the last section, 91.99, uh, paragraph B, just cleaning that up, um, just to refer to the county attorney to be able to bring injunctive action since we don't meet as much anymore. So with that, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but if there's none, I can yield back my time and we can open for follow comment.
Thank you. And, um, thank you for doing your due diligence. I know it's kind of a moving target with the cannabis, so I, I appreciate that. And I noticed that, that landline too, I kind of laughed. And of course I was making the comment, that was back from the seventies, but glad you clarified that that was the nineties.
Yes. Madam Chair, I think it's when cell phones were a brick.
Madam Chair, just a couple of questions, uh, for the attorney. Just, um, the definition of a command center or the, the sent contact center, like what, is that a place or a, um, just the ability to have, how does that define?
Which?
Um, the, I'm sorry. Where we replace the phone, it, it, it then designates that you have to have a.
Under paragraph I, page six, the vehicle barriers?
No. Hold on. Designated, I'm sorry. I have that.
I believe that's J on page.
Maybe in yellow.
Administration of Control Center. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Kreiser, uh, within the ordinance, it's a, a contact center with a phone at a large assembly event. Um, I believe you're referring to an area that is designated so for emergency contact so that it's on the map on the site plan. So if emergencies happen, they know where a command center's at and you call it a contact center.
Contact center.
Yes. Madam Chair, Commissioner Dietrich, I, I think you're referring to paragraph J on page seven, the administrative control center?
Yes.
Is that it? Yeah, that, that was originally in the ordinance, so that carried over without amendment. Um, I think it's just permitting the sheriff or law enforcement to know where to go to in the event of emergency.
Okay.
So that they have a place to contact.
Excellent. And then, oh, and then just the, I know last year we had just the concern with, um, you know, timeliness of them, the application, and then this is, this is definitive, it's we're going to be strict with the timeline because there's a lot of things that have to get done and prepared for. So, um, I just want to reiterate that, that that's the intent with the 90 days, making it a longer time so that, um, and that, and that if people are aware, um, so that if they come in past that time, um, with a new application, it wouldn't be processed. Is that what we're, is that the understanding?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Dietrich, that is my understanding as well. Um, I think that's the direction from the board and I'm guessing the administrator will also pass that along, uh, on down to departments that processes. But in that regard, that is why I amended paragraph C on page 10 to state that the application fee will not be refunded in event of incomplete, untimely or denied application. So if you file it up late, you don't get your money back on your application fee. And then we also have paragraph E, denial of the license. If you go over to page 11, number four, the application is untimely. So if you come in on day 89, 190 is your deadline, you're not having a large event.
I just wanted to reiterate that because, I mean, being that there's been a lot of changes to this or, or will be if we pass this to the ordinance that, um, you know, public is aware that, that we're, this is, this, there's a lot of whys that got involved with the changes, so, other than the cannabis. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Dietrich. I think that's a very good point that needs to be made because this is for the health and the safety of our community. So I'm really glad that you touched on that. So that being said, do I open it up for the public hearing?
Yes, please.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and, um, look for opening for a public hearing. And does anyone want to speak on this large assembly? Is there anyone that would like to speak on large assembly? And one last time, we'll make sure that if anyone's in the audience, that they can speak on large assembly. None being noted, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, just a comment, had a fair board meeting last night and this came up. Uh, how is it's going to be related to county fair, especially the cannabis, if it's this year or next year? So they're going to be in touch with the county attorney's office later this week. They're not here today, but it's going to be covered in case somebody mentions it to you or you think about it later. Thank you.
Ooh, good point. All right. Um, so now we'll go ahead and make a resolution for large assembly with the revisers committee reviewed and proposed amendments. And the 13th committee took action, referring the county board. So that being said, we'll look for a resolution on this large assembly. We'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Holland.
Madam, yeah, we gotta make, someone's gotta make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We, uh, approve it or, what do I make the motion for?
Madam Chair, it would be, the, the first item we need is a motion to approve ordinance amendment number 24 dash one.
That's what I'm making.
And I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Holland, second by Commissioner Ketchmark. And there's no more discussion. All right. We'll look for Commissioner Ketchmark.
Aye.
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 Resolution passes.
Madam Chair, then the next item would be approving the resolution approving summary language for publication of ordinance number 24 dash one, amending the Wright County Court of Ordinances, Article One, Chapter 91, Large Assemblies.
Okay.
What you said.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, what you said.
I'll make that.
Make that motion.
No, no, I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Dietrich, seconded by Commissioner Ketchmark. If there's no more discussion, this is a roll call. Commissioner Dietrich?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you for your patience. All right. So then we'll go ahead and look at the workshop discussions kind of, um, that we want to put on the April 9th meeting.
Madam Chair, we got an item.
Before that, 9:35. Planning and zoning item.
Oh, sorry Barry.
Barry's turn.
No, that's not true.
I want it to be true.
Look at that's hot here.
Uh, so what you have before you is a resolution for a determination of need for an EAW for valley sanding, uh, val, valley paving, sand and gravel mining. Uh, it's a, it's a proposed pit in Monticello Township. It's the extension of an existing 36 acre pit, uh, into the 80 acres to the west of it. Uh, the EAW has been prepared, was submitted to the environmental quality board, opened up for, for comment, uh, has since been closed and the determination is, uh, no need for an EIS is warranted. So this is a resolution, um, open for any questions.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
I have questions today. Um, just, just a quick one. What, what would, what would have triggered an EIS, um, in this case or when these come up for review like this?
Well, there's, it, it's all going to depend upon the property, you know, if, if there's potential wetland impacts or impact to rare and unique species, um, you know, any number of environmental concerns that may come up could certainly trigger an EIS. Ultimately, that determination is up to the elected bodies. Um, an EAW is to identify what potential, uh, environmental impacts may occur and ways for the proposer to mitigate those potential impacts. Um, I personally have never seen an EIS. I am aware of one that is about to take place right now in an neighboring county, but, um, it's, it's not often that projects get to the level where an environmental impact statement is actually necessary.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more questions with the board? All right. We'll look for a motion to pass this resolution.
I'll move.
I'll second. And we'll say Commissioner Ha, or Dietrich, sorry, and a second by Commissioner Holland. No more discussion. We'll go ahead for a roll call. Commissioner Dietrich?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you Barry, sorry, I almost forgot you there.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now am I on the right discussion for the workshop?
Workshop.
There we go.
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, staff would put together a list. Uh, we had quite a few items that were ready for discussion, tried to pare it down a little bit, uh, and brought forward the items that we felt would be most timely. Uh, so just a recommendation to move that forward. Uh, if there's other items you would like to add, feel free to let me know and we can add those to the agenda for next week.
So I would like to bring, um, just one more thing to the table. And if we run out of time, it can be pushed forward. We're not on a real time crunch on this. Just to kind of look at the ordinance, um, related to impervious surfaces a little bit, just have some late discussion on that if we could.
Okay. Madam Chair, I, I think that might be a topic that would eat up a lot of time during a workshop. I'm wondering if we maybe want to set it to a different committee meeting, um, at another time.
Okay.
There's going to be a lot of data coming from planning and zoning as to that topic. And i- if the board wants to have an in-depth discussion on it, I think it's going to be more than.
So maybe you want to do a, a separate workshop or you want to do a committee of the whole?
I guess my recommendation is we discuss meetings in the future at next week. Maybe we could find a time that works for everybody.
Okay.
And then get some understanding of when all that data will be gathered. So I'll make a note that that's one of the meetings we'll schedule next week.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have one item and I talked to a drainage coordinator and I let Attorney Kreiser know I was looking to address this, but it'd be performance based bidding for ditch work in Wright County. And there's been concerns about, uh, should we consider if a company or contractor is in good standing or not? What does that exactly mean related to the customer service that we're getting on these ditches? So, uh, the coordinator, Matt, said he'd be prepared for the workshop to present what that might look like. And I thought all the decision makers up here, since most of us have ditches, should know what's going on and what our options are to address it. And if you want to get more up to speed between now and then, you can talk to Matt also. But I would petition that to be added to the list.
That's good with board. We will add that to the list then.
Will that be a, a timely matter too? Being ditches sometimes get a little lengthy. Do we want to have that as a separate also?
Madam Chair, this one's more time sensitive because we're looking for something with the next round of bids potentially to get this tightened up or cleaned up. And with the infrequency that we meet, I think we should start at least next Tuesday.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioner?
Yes.
Is this something brought by the, uh, people in the community or was this Matt that, I mean, what, what compelled the concern?
All the above.
All the above, okay.
Yep. Concern driven, I would say.
Okay.
Between staff, landowners and feedback that I've received.
Okay.
We got it all covered, I would say.
Sounds good.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Um, also then we talked a little bit about a committee of the whole for, um, a different day of April 8th after the EDA. And we have discussed with, um, trying to get together with the EDP before the 16th. Just to let everyone know what's going, going on because there's just been a lot of questions that I cannot answer.
Very well. Um, so I heard, uh, committee of the whole, April 8th, uh, following the EDA meeting.
Yep.
I understand that we want to schedule that as of today.
Yes.
Okay.
If that's a possibility. And I think it'll work for Derek because he was for the E, or the EDA.
So we'll tentatively set that then, uh, work to schedule that for, uh, what do we do, 9:30 on the 8th, following the EDA meeting?
Sure. If that works for all of you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, what's the topic?
This is with the EDP because there's been so many questions brought to my attention and because of not being able to discuss them, there's just been a lot of questions that I'm unable to answer.[1675.83]